All right, Committee on Finance and Law will come to order, calling the roll, Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. Fiore is present. First item on the agenda is a review of special education legal services vouchers. The report is that in July of 2023, there was a $429 bill, and that is all the expenditure from that account for fiscal '24 at that point.
Sheed them placed on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so voted. Then the next item is a bid award for pest control. Mrs. Moynihan.
Thank you, Mr. Fiore. We went out to request for bids, or request for proposals for our monthly pest control services. We received three bids, one from our current vendor, Flynn Pest Control Pest and Incorporated, Wallfam Pest Services. As you can see, the breakdown for each of the bids, that Flynn Pest Control is our current vendor and is the lowest and most responsible bidder. And if you are comparing to our current contract, to this new contract for the next school year, the bid increased by $780. So again, the monthly cost is $710 for all of our school, within the yearly cost of $8520.
Motion to award it to Flynn Pest Control.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, stick your hands up.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all opposed, so voted. Then we have a bill payable warrant for fiscal year '24 in the amount of $2,390,852.76.
Motion to approve.
Second, but on discussion, Mr. Chairman. On page seventeen, I'd like to be recorded as present on voucher number 20962 in the amount of $3,977 to Pride Inc., as I serve on the board of directors and the executive finance committee.
It's noted. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, stick your hands up.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we're out of here.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for joining us, I call the meeting to order, if you could please join us in the pledge.
This is the flag of the United States of America, and the Republic of the United States stands on a nation of God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early night? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And if people don't mind, we'd like to do a moment of silence for three individuals affiliated with the Taunton Public School system. The first is Stephen Sidwell, who was the father, who is, was the father of Brad Sidwell. I had football coach, an outstanding gentleman in his own right. He was involved with American football. He coached in the National Football League for 22 years and was a college football coach for 16. As a coach, he was in Colorado, UNLV, SMU Defensive Coordinator. He was with the New England Patriots as a linebacker coach, the Indianapolis Colts, the New York, New Orleans Saints, defensive coordinator, linebacker coach, New Orleans Saints again, defensive coordinator, Houston Oilers, New England Patriots again, and the Seattle Seahawks. Mr. Cabral and I had the good fortune to attend his service last week after we had the convocation at the high school. You know, there were a lot of football players there. I guess Mr. Cabral told me if I'd paid more attention to football, I probably would have recognized them. All I know is every one of them was really big. So that kind of told me they were former football players. But what a joy his family was, and Brad had all of us kind of quietly chuckling. Not really quiet, it was funny when he talked about how his parents met when they went to college. Was it the University of Colorado? And her grades started to fail, I believe, her second year, her grades were going down because she was majoring in Steve Sidwell. And their families entirely, they're just enjoyable, we went to their home afterwards. I mean, it's the way his father was, that's how I had football coaches. And I was so happy I was able to, we both were fortunate to be able to attend this service. So we'd like you to keep them and your thoughts and your prayers. After that, that weekend, we lost another legend in Taunton. We lost Don O'Clary, a former superintendent of schools, who really worked on August 27th, he was 79 years old. He's a man that I knew truly loved the city, loved his family, loved his church, loved his country. You couldn't say enough about Don. But he grew up in Taunton, graduated from Coyle High School, attended PC, went on to Northeastern University, married his wife Judy, they had four children together. And he was drafted into the Army, went to Vietnam. He stayed in the Reserve for a long time as a lieutenant colonel. And he just kept moving up, he became, he was a teacher at Martin Middle School, then he became, you know, an assistant principal, then he became the principal, and then he became the assistant superintendent in schools. And I was fortunate to be one of the members that promoted him to superintendent. I can't say enough for his dedication to all the things that were important, as like his church, his family, his community, and his country. So please keep Mr. Clary and your thoughts and your prayers, his family. And this weekend too, there was another person who passed away, former teacher in Taunton. We don't have too much information on when his services are going to be, but he passed away on September 2nd. Jason Cornelio was a special needs teacher in Taunton. He eventually went to the Normandin Middle School down in New Bedford. He was only 49 years old, he's the son of Fred and Marie Cornelio, who was a longtime secretary at Mulcahy School. So our sympathies go out to their family, and he also has a sister and I believe a brother. I have to say one thing about Jason, because I knew him, he was a friend of my son's. Everybody called him coach because he coached so many sports. But one of the gentlemen that Mr. Cabral has had the pleasure of meeting too, also taught in Normandin, and said that Jason was the finest teacher he ever saw with special ed students. He said he really could just understand those children. He said, and he told me on Monday, when we found out about it, when we told him what had happened, because he's since retired, he said, there's going to be a lot of crying at that school because the whole school loved him. So you can't say anything nicer about that than people really cared about him. So I'm asking you to please keep all these people and their families and your thoughts and prayers, a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
I guess I'll do the roll call, Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
That would be good, right? Mr. Pulowski.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Viera.
Present.
Mr. George.
Present.
Mr. Laura.
Present.
And Chairman Dr. DeBrow.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connor, I forgive you for sounding.
Present, thank you. Next, there is no student advisory committee report this evening, and next we have public input, Chairman DeMello.
Thank you. Public input, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we currently request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation and guidelines be provided upon signup, and individuals be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time each individual will have to speak will be determined by the number of people who signed the register, and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. Do we have any signups for tonight for public input, Mr. Barata? No? Okay. All set, Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Taunton Public School District Social Emotional Support Update, Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as Amy Moynihan, Director of Special Education, and Stephanie Hoy, Director of Student Services, Transportation, and Title IX make their way to the podium, I'll just say some brief comments, I'll provide some brief comments regarding, we thought it would be imperative to have this presentation now, at the beginning of the school year, to kind of just remind the public and remind the school board of the work that took place last year, and to kind of give you an update on where we are as a school system. It also coincides nicely with the launch of our community input teams. So the facilitators have all been contacted, and we'll be reaching out to those who registered to participate on the community input teams during Convocation Day. And there'll also be a communication that'll be going out to all families, all caregivers, and all our schools, from their principal, reminding families to reach out to our teachers, work with our guidance staff, work with our schools, to make sure that our students not only succeed academically, but also their social, emotional, mental health needs are supported through the Taunton Public Schools. So I'll let Amy and Stephanie take it from here. So again, this is not a one and done, this is something that we are heavily committed to this year. And you'll also learn about a new program that we'll be launching at Taunton High School, which I'm very excited about. So thank you.
Hi, everyone, thank you so much. I guess when we were putting this together in just a short time, we were last here in April with this presentation. So in just the short time since we've last met, I'm kind of proud of the work that we've done. And that's, a lot of that's to you guys, so thank you so much. Really? So last April, I just wanted to do a quick review to see where we came. So we talked a lot about mental health awareness, we had some slides about some statistics. But I just want to give you an update of things that we're doing currently to help our students. So again, we've done the Selus survey, we had the VOCAL survey, which is with MCAS, that piece, and the DAP, which is the developmental assets profile. So that looks at the individuals' feelings and perceptions. We worked a lot with connecting students. We talked about, you know, according to research, improving classroom management, implementing service learning programs, making schools safer and more supportive for LGBTQ plus students. So those are all the things that we worked on last year and developed and are continuing to do. Just some other things the district has done, we purchased the SEL curriculum, we've hired staff to support our students, we've had our BRIDGE CIT, our district mental health teams, we're working on growing our school-based mental health teams, the MINDUP curriculum, tier two, tier three supports with staffing, school-based counseling, community-based providers, district-wide student support team, building-based student support teams, which is formerly the Child Study. So these are ongoing, these are things where we left off last year. So I wanted to share with the Selus data with you. So you saw a little bit of this last year, we didn't have any really comparative data because it was still new. So if you look at fall 2021 was the first year. So the students, and you can, there's the key, the students at the top in the darker blue, those are highly developed skills, where the student, that low, smaller, purply bar, those are emerging skills. And then we have developing and develop skills. So we really work looking at those developing skills, those are the students that we want to target and move. And if you look at fall 2021, is there a laser thing on this? Yep. And then it would be spring 2022. So you saw kids move out of the merging into the developing. Okay? And then, you know, these are percentages, and we have all that, how many students took it and participated. And then we have fall of 22, 2022, compared to spring of 2023. And if you look, we grew nicely here. Does that make sense? So this is, again, early data over time. We're going to continue to administer the Selus and the mental health screeners throughout the year. Some other information, we looked, we, last year in April, we had a couple of years, but this is just, we're comparing 2022 attendance to 2023 attendance. So a lot of the efforts and things we put, we did see increases in attendance, and we listed it by school. In addition, we saw a decrease of 7% in out-of-school suspensions, which is huge. So kids are in school, we're growing, we still have work to do, but the things that we did since April and last year is showing progress. So just an update on the Manette Community Health Center in Taunton, that as you can see when you drive by, Parker, they're working on those places. The anticipated opening is for, four weeks? October 4th, sorry. I was looking at the numbers, so that's our anticipated there, they'll have behavioral health supports and as addition to medical supports. They do have a, we do have a full-time, they hired a full-time school counselor, correct?
Yes.
And that's just kind of the services that would be available for our families and our students. So what's new this year?
Let me click.
Yeah, you can click.
So we recognize that it takes a village for us to really see growth in our students from an academic and mental health perspective. So in collaboration, all this has been done in collaboration with TEA, student feedback, administrators, our families and communities. Superintendent Cabral alluded to the fact that we will be starting some new CITs coming up soon, and we will continue this collaboration not only with TEA, but with our community. We recognize, and as you may remember, last time when we were here in April, we talked about really this being a global issue, not just a Taunton issue, a national issue. So the importance of us connecting with our community resources to assist us with these type of program and supports is really crucial. We also collaborated on a classroom safety protocol, not only with myself and Amy, but members of TEA who also offered feedback. And that has been shared and discussed, not only with principals, but we've asked building principals to also discuss and share that out with their teachers and their staff within their building. So thanks to you and your support, we were able to see a vision of ours kind of come true. Pre-COVID, there was a lot of work that started on a BRIDGE CIT. So the idea was really at first to be focused in the high school level, and how do we support high school students that really show and demonstrate or present with some level of mental health issues that may impact them academically. That's kind of evolved, it evolved this past year, year and a half. To really take a look at the entire district, we looked at different programming in different towns and cities, and we utilized what we learned through our CIT process to really develop what we call the reset or assistance spaces. So as you may recall, we have one reset space in every building. The only exception to that is the high school, it has two reset spaces or assistance spaces, primarily focused on our eighth and ninth graders. Right now, this is just a quick staffing update. Amy primarily, along with Dr. Watt and sometimes myself, we're very busy with interviews all summer long with a large staff that we had to hire to support our reset spaces. So right now, we have two vacant spots for school social workers, and we have some, six vacancies for tutors. And we're happy to report that the high school has two educators that have been hired from that space. The high school has been looked at a little differently because obviously they're content-specific, credit-based. So the decision was to hire two educators along with other supports to make sure that students weren't missing out on any of their academics. So we are still in the interview process, we're still getting applicants. We feel very strongly that we want the right people in our reset spaces. So we have been very particular on who we hire and we recommend. We had many, many, many applicants, but as you know, we feel like Taunton's very special, our students are very special, they deserve the best, and we've been very, I guess, particular. Particular.
So one of the things, we looked at other districts that have something similar to this, and everybody said it's about relationships and people that have the ability to create relationships with our students. So that is how we look at our candidates and how we determine what school they would best fit in based off that school individual needs. So we've been very, very fortunate. We're off to a good start, and there's a little update because I just recommended two more people, so it's ongoing.
So as we were this summer, working to really establish and finalize the protocol for our reset space, we collaborated with TEA and some of their members on a few occasions to make sure that we were working together to develop a protocol that seems sensible and realistic in supporting our students, but also supporting our staff and our teachers as well. So that is a fluid, this protocol will be a fluid document. We have offered professional development for all our staff in the reset space, our building administrators. Our building administrators have gone back to their staff during their staff meetings and discussed the protocol with them as well. But we recognize that with anything that's new, we need to revisit. So we'll be revisiting it frequently, asking for feedback, and making tweaks as necessary throughout the school year. We are all lifelong learners, of course, always educating ourselves. So this is a quick snapshot of all the professional development that we've had from 2018 to April 2023 to support the capacity of our staff when it comes to supports for mental health for our students. So I want you to just take a quick look at this, and remember, this is 2018 to 2023. But if we go to the next slide, these professional developments have happened from April 2023 to present time. So all these professional developments have been offered to our staff since April of this past year. It's pretty remarkable, something I think we are all very proud of. We truly believe that building the capacity of our staff will only support our students more, so we can only do that through appropriate professional development. Something new that also Superintendent Cabral alluded to earlier, that Taunton High School will be partnering up with Kyle Cares, which is an organization that most of our Hockamock schools are partnered up with. And it is very new to us, so you'll be hearing a lot more as the year goes on. But essentially, it is an organization that supports the awareness of mental health and suicide prevention. So they do work very much with the other high schools, we've heard great feedback, and we've decided to incorporate it at Taunton High School, and there'll certainly be more to come. But we are very excited about the partnership with Kyle Cares. And that's all we have for this quick update, but we can certainly take any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. I have one question, I was not quite clear on page four, what the student mental health monitoring consists of.
So the Selus is, the Selus is, let me try to give some history. So we were awarded the mental health grant, and we had a Selus grant through DESI. So this looks at the individual's perceptions. And I don't have my cheat sheet here, but give me a second, I will get it for you. So the Selus looks at things based off the CASL competency. So students' self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationships, and social awareness. So the data that I presented was just accumulative of the district. We do break it down by schools, and then the building-based mental health teams use that information to help target students that we want to target for certain groups. So we could have groups of students to develop their self-awareness skills. So these are skills that all students should have to promote emotional growth, right? It's not disability-related or anything like, it's just like your basic, these are the things that we need, our students need, and they develop as they grow.
And so you identify which students need to develop which skills?
Yep.
Such important work you're doing, it's really nice to see such a focus on, you know, mental health and helping our children at an early age, you know, so that they grow and develop successfully.
So when we shared some of that information with DESI, with our district instructional leadership team, one of the comments was, this, not many districts are looking at social, emotional well-being as we are. So the fact that we do the Selus and the mental health screeners is really, we're kind of like ahead of the game a little bit. Not all districts are looking at that data like currently Taunton is, they're starting to, but we're kind of like ahead of a lot of districts in this area. So, and again, that's with all your support and our staff, and our kids.
That is wonderful to hear.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Laura.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, very thorough and very well planned out. The fact that it's been inclusive, that your administration is working with the staff, with the teachers, to let them know exactly how we as a committee, how we as a community are working together to address the issues. Because back in June, when we had that presentation with public input, we saw the need to address these issues, which were already ongoing with the administration, dealing with these particular issues. But we felt that at that time, it would be essential to get something on paper, let's discuss it, let everybody be on board, and to be fully supportive of this inclusion. So thank you very much.
Mr. Pulowski. Did you have, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, so thank you, Mr. George.
Thank you. Thank you for that great presentation. I really do appreciate the trainings that you're providing to the staff as well, because it's great to provide, you know, all these resources, but without trained staff to really, you know, implement it the proper way, it can only go so far. So I'm wondering if you've got any input on how those reset rooms have been working so far?
So we met today. Funny, you should ask.
Good timing for that.
So we met with our school counselors today and our high school associates, and we got some feedback. It's so new in its conception, obviously, with day three. So some of the information that we got today, we're processing, we explained. But we also feel like it's important to stay consistent to the protocol for a period of time before we make any significant changes. But one of the important things that we'll be doing is asking for the feedback so we can get together as a roundtable to take a look at the protocols and make tweaks as needed. But like anything else, when it's new, it's difficult to change anything right away because you want to make sure you give it enough time to be able to work. So more to come, I guess.
But they're having student support meetings, and they're talking about children and what they need. So that is game changer.
Yeah, it was a great meeting, so we're very optimistic.
Thank you.
Superintendent Cabral.
And just to kind of piggyback on that question and that response, I also want to emphasize that these are building-based programs. So I appreciate Mrs. Hoy and Mrs. Moynihan, all their work to support our staff. But these are building-based programs, not district programs, there's a difference. Because we believe that their capacity already exists in the building with the resources that we have supported or provided to our schools. So I think, you know, having some oversight, having some monitoring, we're collecting data. So as students enter the room, we're collecting data, so we'll be able to monitor who's going in, how long, and are they being successful? So I believe over a long period of time, we will reap the benefits of this investment in our students and in our school system.
Thank you, Mr. Pulowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Amy, Stephanie, thanks so much for the great presentation. Really excited about the reset rooms, and I'm glad to hear that you guys are being very selective about who you're choosing to work in there, it's really important. And you guys kind of answered what my questions are. It's a brand-new thing, and I think this is a long, long view sort of plan. So I wonder if you guys are thinking about these sort of objective metrics by which you would gauge the effectiveness of this? And it is over time, and to Mr. Cabral's point, it's building-based, right? So it's going to, it's going to work differently at every school. But I think it would be helpful to think about some overall just metrics, objectives, data that you're going to be looking at, you're going to be collecting over time, baselining it right now, and then look at it a year from now, two years from now, and hopefully- And hopefully you'll see trends in the positive direction as a result of these things, but.
So Steph and I and Dr. Watt, who's helped us with this, we're like little bit of a data geeks. So the reset staff people are trained to collect data. Could be time in, time out, academic data, discipline data, suspension. You know, because this also can be used as an alternative to suspension, recess, time on learning, time out of the class, time in the gym, the regular classroom. So we have all those data sheets all set up for folks. So hopefully by the end of the year, when we're probably going to be invited back to do this summary, we'll have some preliminary baseline data for you guys, for you folks, sorry.
That's awesome. That's what I want here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairman DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. Just refer back to page seven on the slide deck, please. So for the folks at home, I think it's important that if you could kindly just expand on future presentation, TEA, that means Taunton Educated Association. I think that's valuable for the stakeholders so people at home would understand. And if you could also add school committee to the stakeholders. I think that's also important for our folks at home. Well, we have some members that have signed up, I believe. But anyway. And as I said in my invocation remarks, that teaching and learning work in unison. So all those team players and the stakeholders is what makes it happen. So you can't teach and learn without support of one another, right? So I think that's very critical that the public at home knows that we are working in the right direction. And maybe baby steps, but they will be larger steps soon to come. So thank you so much for your work. I'm so happy that this is going forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent.
And I'm really excited about the partnership with Kyle Cares and the JED Foundation. I've already received several calls from other school systems that are looking to partner with Kyle Cares. The Hockamock League that we're in for athletics is also considering adopting Kyle Cares to be their mental health support for student athletes. So again, Taunton Public Schools continues to be a leader in Bristol County. So thank you for your outstanding work and your contributions.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just have three quick updates that I'll provide you. So one, first one, welcoming new staff. So I'm very pleased to report a very successful completion of this year's new teacher orientation, which was led by Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Chris Barata. It was a three-day intensive program where we onboarded over 60 new staff members. The orientation started with introductions by key school and district leaders, including myself, Mr. Barata, district administrators. We were also honored to have Mayor O'Connell and members of the school committee members attend and introduce themselves, which really helped to establish a holistic view of the collective support our new teachers can expect. And many of our new teachers, you know, commented that they've been to previous new teacher orientations, but by far this was the most comprehensive. And they also felt that this was the most down-to-earth because they really got to meet and know the people who work behind the scenes. So Mr. Barata provided an insightful overview on the district strategic plan. He outlined our mission statement, our vision statement, and also our educational objectives. He also discussed academic excellence, equity and community engagement frameworks. And our prioritization plan was also discussed to ensure resources are shared to serve our new student body best. Further than our commitment of inclusive education, there was an in-depth review of the D cap, which is the District Curriculum Accommodation Plan, to ensure that our teachers have the strategies and resources to accommodate diverse learning styles. They took a deep dive into the D cap. Each new teacher was also provided with their Chromebook and they received a robust orientation session from our IT department. This covered a range of instructional technology platforms that we utilize in the Taunton Public Schools. We also had a very deep, took a very deep dive into school safety. So I won't go into all the different aspects that we covered on school safety, but the focal point was training on Crisis Scout, which for many, they had never had, many who taught in other districts, this was the first time they ever had such an app that they could utilize in the middle, in the event of a crisis. So we also ended with a review of universal design. So I was very happy during my visits to all our schools to see universal design being implemented in our classrooms. So our new teachers also received that training. So I also want to give a special thanks to Mr. Barata for his meticulous planning and execution of the three-day orientation. Also special commendations to my leadership team, but in particular to curriculum leadership, Mrs. Palowski, Mrs. Mendoza and Mrs. Kirk, who all collaborated to make this a very successful three-day new teacher orientation. Also very proud to share the work our athletic director, Mark Adovianelli, is leading in collaboration with Northeastern University. So this is part of our work as a school system to, you know, have a model athletic program and to also work with the MIAA and the Hockamock League to eliminate hate in sports. So Northeastern came in and worked with, this round worked, I believe, 25 of our coaches. They'll be coming back and working with another round of coaches and will begin to start incorporating our student athlete leaders. Where we want our student leaders to be the leaders in the locker rooms, to be the leaders on the fields when the coaches are not there. So this work helps to address hazing, which is something that I do not want to see happening in any of our athletic teams or any of our schools. And we need our students, our student leaders to be the voice and to take charge and take command of the locker rooms to make sure that every student athlete is given this respect and treated with the respect that they deserve. And again, you can review my superintendent's report and get a little more information regarding our work with Northeastern University. And last but not least, I'm very proud of this collaborative effort. Taunton Public Schools has partnered with the Far River Public Schools on a $155,000 competitive grant, to implement a new history curriculum, investigating history for fifth, sixth and seventh graders throughout the Taunton Public Schools. So under the leadership of our humanities director, Danielle Kirk, the initiative aligns with the 2018 History and Social Science Frameworks. But more importantly, it helps to ensure that our teachers and our students have high-quality instructional materials at their disposal. So again, you can read my report and see the outstanding work that is being done. There was a two-day training on August 28th and August 29th, where we had nearly 60 educators participate in the training from Taunton and Far River Public Schools. And there should be more information on that to report in the near future. And I do want to give a shout out to our three teacher leaders, Nathan Sharkley, Caroline Grady and Dana Danahy, who modeled lessons in front of their peers, which you know, it's hard enough to teach in front of kids, but try teaching in front of your peers. So Taunton, again, continues to lead the way, this time through a partnership with the Far River Public Schools. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Superintendent. Okay, we will move on to administrative business. Any business with the staffing report?
Steven placed on file.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and opposed so voted. Administrative business. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were going back to the superintendent's report.
Hold on.
Gotcha. Apologies. Subcommittee reports. Mr. George.
Yes. Student, sorry. Special Programs met earlier today.
No, 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 no.
Sorry, I'm going to be present on staffing report. Yes, I'll be present on staffing report due to my wife being in the school district.
So Subcommittee Reports, Special Programs Subcommittee. Mr. George.
So Special Programs Committee met today at 5:08. In attendance, it was myself, Mr. Louis Laura, Director of Students Services, Stephanie Hoy and Director of Special Ed, Amy Monahan. Also in attendance was Superintendent John Cabral and Assistant Superintendent Chris Barata, as well as Chairman Dr. DeMello. The Special Programs Committee met today for the purpose of discussing the various programs provided by the Taunton Public School to meet the needs of our students, especially those with special education and identified intellectual and emotional disabilities. The programs discussed included the RISE Program, the TLC Program, which is the therapeutic learning centers, the ELC Program, which is the early learning centers, the Alert Alternative Learning Centers and Transitional Opportunity for Pre- vocational Skills, which are all high school programs, as well as the Newcomer Academy Strive Program and a new program, I Decide, which is, incorporates drug education curriculum for students and also provides a restorative justice practice. We also talked about Kyle Cares coming in, the Mind Up Curriculum, as well as the Family Welcome Center and some of the community partnerships and some updates that have been happening. The meeting adjourned at 5:50.
Thank you, Mr. George.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. None opposed so voted. Thank you. Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Fiori.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance and Law Subcommittee met this evening with myself, Dr. DeMello and Mr. Enos. First item on the agenda was a report on special education legal expenses. And the report was that for the month of July 2023, the invoice was $429. So that is all that has been spent from fiscal year '24 so far. Then we had a review of pest control bids. And the committee voted to award the contract to our current vendor, Flynn Pest Control. They were by far the lowest bidder and we've been pleased with their services in the past. And finally, we had a bills payable warrant strictly fiscal '24, the amount of $2,390,852.76. Dr. DeMello asked to be recorded as present on an item for pride on whose board he sits. But otherwise, the warrant was approved and the committee adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Fiori.
Move or rule a little report by the committee chair.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. None opposed so voted. There is no new business list.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there is, if you don't mind. Via the superintendent's office, a memo was sent to the school committee. The memo reads, "Mr. Cabral, one of our great school leaders has passed on. The class of 1980 would like to plant five trees on the Martin School campus in honor of Don O'Clery. We are requesting this from the City of Taunton School Committee. John Geens, Colonel, retired, Camparobetz, California." So I believe that this is a matter for next agenda? Would that be appropriate?
You could refer it to the next agenda.
So if someone could refer to the next agenda, please.
Motion in second to refer to the next meeting agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. None opposed so voted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Unfinished business. Easton Elementary School, school naming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Because this was brought to our attention, I'll read the memo that I provided the school committee, just so the public is aware of what I provided you. So dear school committee members, I hope this memo finds everyone in good health and good spirits. I want to remind you of the process we implemented to solicit public input regarding the petition to rename Easton Elementary School along with the final results. This aligns with the agreement made during the Committee of the Whole meeting held on March 29, 2023. As directed, my administration created the Easton Elementary School Naming Survey. The survey was designed to provide the community with five naming options. And I provided you with the five naming, the five options. The first option was Easton Elementary School. The second option was Easton Elementary School dedicated to Lance Corporal Raymond LaPointe. The third option was Lance Corporal Raymond LaPointe, Easton Elementary School. The fourth option was Lance Corporal Raymond LaPointe Elementary School. And there was a fifth other or a write-in option. The survey was live from April 5, 2023 at 7:00 PM through May 5, 2023 at 4:00 PM when it concluded. Information about the survey was disseminated across the Taunton Public Schools via our social media platforms and was also featured or shared with the Taunton Gazette. We also provided two avenues for community members to participate via direct link to the survey. Easton Elementary School Naming Survey or email submission to an email that we created specifically for this, for this purpose. In total, the district received 838 responses. 355 of 42.4 responses voted to retain the current name. The remaining votes were dispersed among the other naming options and I provided you with the results. 29% favored Lance Corporal Raymond LaPointe Elementary School. 14.6% favored Easton Elementary School dedicated to Lance Corporal Raymond LaPointe. And 9.3% Lance Corporal Raymond LaPointe, Easton Elementary School. Given the significant percentage favoring the retention of the current name, the committee should weigh this factor heavily in the decision-making process. However, based on previous committee's actions, the committee may wish to consider measures similar to those taken when honoring former Mayor Richard Dick Johnson. The committee voted to dedicate the Oakland Educational Complex in honor of the former mayor. And I provided you with a, I provided the committee with a rendering, should the committee wish to act in a similar fashion, and what the committee could do to honor Raymond LaPointe at the Easton Elementary School while also retaining the name of the school. So again, I provided you with an option, should you wish to act, but that's something that the committee should discuss. And whatever you discuss, I will be happy to reply to our veterans and also to carry out those actions with the support of my leadership team.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. So I think a good alternative is to still honor Ray LaPointe in some fashion. And I hope the committee is going to consider that. Chairman DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. There has been discussion with the TAVVA members at a most recent meeting. And for full disclosure, I'm an associate member of the organization. I'm not a voting member because I'm not a veteran of the Vietnam War or a veteran at all. But the indication was what's in the artist's rendering, which explains Easton Elementary School in memory of Lance Corporal Raymond R. LaPointe with his date of birth and date of death. So I believe that they were just waiting for the artist's rendering, which has been shared with them.
Yep, this has been shared.
So this has been shared. And I believe that we are at a point to move forward if the committee wants to, or we can continue to deliberate and act accordingly.
So when you say move forward, are you going to choose one of these this evening or are they going to be both?
They're the same, yeah. It's two different signage, signage.
On the property, so you'll have both sides. Oh, okay.
Yeah, both signs will be exactly as in the artist's rendering.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll move that we proceed with retaining the name of Easton Elementary School with a plaque notation in memory of Lance Corporal Raymond LaPointe.
Stuck in that.
As depicted in the pictures here?
As depicted.
As depicted.
On discussion, Mayor, yes. Please make sure it's as in the picture because the placard is something totally different. So just to be clear.
So the motion is to use both of these renderings, thank you, at the elementary school and we will do one of each as indicated here, just so everyone's clear. Motion made and seconded?
Seconded, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed so voted. Thank you very much. Community input team update.
Dr. DeMello, this one's for you because here's your chance to sign up for a CIT.
I'm on board.
I'm on board, whatever you need. I'm here for you.
So in your packet, I provided you with an updated memo. So during Convocation Day, you may have remembered that I posted a QR code during the presentation, but you have this QR code in your packet. So if you have not signed up for one of the CITs and if a CIT interests you, I would encourage you to scan the QR code and sign up for the CIT or CITs that are of interest to you. So we have five CITs that will be reviewing the student handbook and student discipline and looking to incorporate restorative practices. We're going to review the therapeutic learning programs entrance and exit criteria. We're going to reevaluate the Taunton Alternative High School and also look at potential expansion, offering additional grades. We're going to take a look at our social, emotional learning and mental health supports. And then we're also going to identify the implementation of a pre-K to 12 anti-bullying or character education program. So during Convocation Day, we had about 900 staff members in the auditorium. 35 signed up to participate in CITs. And I have shared that information with the facilitators who have no affiliation with the Taunton Public Schools. We're bringing in outside facilitators with a fresh view, with a fresh lens to really value the voice and the input from all our stakeholders. And those meetings will be starting sometime later this month. So again, I encourage you to utilize the QR code or to let me or one of our administrative assistants know which CIT I have to serve on. And we will make sure you get all the information. And I welcome you all to serve on as many CITs as you're interested in. And that concludes my update on the CITs.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Superintendent.
And I extend that invitation to the mayor's office, though.
Thank you. Number three is school committee report, excuse me, school committee retreat report.
I just put that on the agenda in case anyone who attended the retreat would like to report out or share their feedback on the retreat. Personally, as a superintendent, who hears from other superintendents and other school systems that are struggling with the work that you tackled, I feel that you deserve a lot of credit publicly for bringing in a facilitator to provide a low-level, entry-level overview of what diversity, equity, and inclusion means, and how it impacts our work as educators.
Thank you. Any, any business with the action item update?
Yes, Mayor. To the members, there are a few items here that we can take some action on finally. So if we go down the list, let's start at the renaming of the Easton Elementary School. I was suggested to take it off today, but it's not done yet, so let's leave it there. The next one is the Refer Solar On Schools Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole meeting met on May 3 in, on 2023, and I don't know what the committee wants to do moving forward with this, but it's been seven months, six months, whatever it is.
I would like to leave it on.
I'm sorry?
I said I would like to leave it on.
Okay. Any other committee members?
I mean, I'd motion to remove it if it's the pleasure of this board, but if it wants to keep it.
I would request that it be kept on also.
So would?
Mr. Fiori?
I, I think we should keep it on also, because part of the reason we haven't taken action to this point is we are still looking also at coordinating what the city's response is going to be on, on other city properties. And I think how we fit in with that policy would be a helpful thing to explore.
So are we going to reconvene in a Committee of the Whole to discuss this further? Are we bringing in any experts? Are we bringing in other proposals?
All of the above.
All of the above, okay. And what other steps necessary to make that happen?
We'll, we'll let you know when it's.
Who's going to let us know?
I'll, I'll bring it forward to you, just like we are right now. We'll let you know when we'd like to bring something forward.
Okay. I understand, but you keep mentioning "we." Who's the "we"?
Me.
You? Okay. Everybody good with that?
Is there a motion?
No.
There is no second. So we'll leave it on to infinity, I guess. Next up, we have the reschedule of the school committee retreat, which has been held on August 21, 2023. So I believe that action item can be removed from the list.
Motion to, motion to remove the item from the action committee list.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted.
And that's it. Thank you.
There is no press here this evening, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, Mayor, if I may, we have our first football game of the year, Friday night, 7:00 PM, under the lights. So hopefully, we can all go out and support our Taunton Tigers against New Bedford High, against New Bedford High. So hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted.